Russo. Morley. Wolfson. Milburn. Censor.
Full agenda?
Second. Yes, I'd like to bring up, instead of going into a closed or an open meeting on this right here, after some thoughts that we tabled this until next week when we have a full board.
You talked to the chairperson about that?
Mm-hmm.
Last week? She did not want to table it until then?
I did speak with her, and she did not have a problem with it, to next Wednesday at 9:00 a.m., but that's just...
On Friday, I discussed that, and she didn't like that option. What's transpired since then between you two?
Mm-hmm. That's just a thought I had. I thought we should have a full board on this.
Any other discussion on that issue? My opinion is we move forward since I did contact the chairperson last week on it, and was advised that she wanted us to go forward with it, and we do have people that drove a long ways to get here to attend this meeting.
Vice Chair, might I add, if we go through this, this motion is already here on the table, so if it's going to be brought forth, then we need to have a motion, a second, and then discussion if we're going to move forward. So, at that point in time, it's probably the proper time to discuss that. Is that correct? Okay, thanks.
What's that?
We're going to approve the agenda as presented?
Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there any public comment on agenda items only?
Good morning. My name is Mike Baumberger. Hopefully by now you will have three, copies of three sessions of the Open Meetings Act legislation. The post for this meeting includes a motion to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged documents, supposedly exempt from the Open Meetings Act. From my experience, past working experience, this is, I hope this wasn't on any advice of counsel, because if it was, it's questionable, if not bad, legal advice. If you do go into closed session, look at... Three. This board will be subject to those penalties, but the attorney won't. He doesn't penalize anybody but the board members. I have reason to believe that the real reason to go into closed session is to discuss the attorney for this board's recommendation to file a petition with the circuit court to bank water. In my opinion, this is also questionable legal advice. Your petition will certainly be opposed, and a counter complaint petition will be filed to lower the lake level. This will be a long, expensive legal fight. It isn't going to be a simple hearing. It's going to be a battle. Based on the print Newhoff report, there's a greater likelihood that the lake level, if we file a counter complaint, the lake level would be lowered, not raised. The last point I'm going to cover is, I'm not sure about this, I'm still gathering the information, but it looks like almost $600,000 of the special assessment money for Houghton Lake has been expended, and it appears that there's $10,000 for fixing the gates, and there's money to operate, but the majority of the money, I think in excess of $500,000 to $600,000, has been for consulting fees, attorney fees, and reports. This, in another legislative situation, would be called waste and manage, or waste and fraud and mismanagement. I don't think there's any fraud, but I certainly, certainly think that before you expend additional monies on attorney fees for a petition that's doomed and is going to not achieve your purposes, I think you could reconsider. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir, come ahead.
Craig Cotterman. Craig Cotterman, old trail drive. His history of banking water, these private meetings or by invitation-only meetings with Eagle, and now this closed session, to me, it's a conspiracy. Everyone knew here that David Russo was banking water for the past 30 years. He was actually proud that he was doing it. He said several times, "I bank six-plus inches of water." On my property, I have a long history of being flooded out. Even at a legal lake level, when you factor in the sage effect, water comes over my seawall and into my yard. I get inundated with water. Average lake levels in the spring are 11 inches over the legal level. If you factor in, again, the sage effect, I'm at flood stage almost on a yearly basis. I have people up here, meeting with Eagle, plotting my future, and I don't even know what goes on. I know you tape these meetings with Eagle. I know they were Zoom meetings. I asked for a copy from Jody. She says you don't have a copy. I would assume your attorney has a copy of those proceedings with Eagle, and now you're going into closed session, and I don't really know what your foundation is. Just because you've got attorney-client privilege, that may not include this, this item you're bringing up. If I hire an attorney, it works every time, but when government hires an attorney, spends my money so you can discuss the future of my property, I don't believe that's, I don't believe it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Morning. Nathan Floyd, 1-2, 2-2-1, East Houghton Lake Drive. Reason for being here today is the original advertisement for this meeting, so that was going to be available via Zoom. However, that's not available, as of, I think it was taken down a week or two ago. False advertisement. I feel that there would have been a lot more attendees in this meeting, therefore, I think the meeting should have been postponed until correspondence could have been sent out to let people know that if you want to attend this meeting, you have to be in person. Next, where is my $300 from that assessment? Where's that money at? Has it been spent? Where are we at with fixing these dams, with the dam? I used to have lakefront property, now I have swampfront property because of the low level of the lake. And those are the questions I have for the board. Hopefully, those get answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And we'll move along. Next item is entertain a motion to go into a closed session with the attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Some people have good comments there. We should reconsider. Bottom line is... Bottom line, we don't have all five people here. Some comments, postpone. Like the idea of having... Generally, I didn't hear anything. I'm only interrupting. I think it's, we should consider.
Any other comment?
Well, it is on the table. We have a motion and a second. A second does not mean you agree. It just opens up the floor for discussion, so...
That's correct.
Having said that, I, if anyone knows me, I'm not afraid of having any conversation in public. What we also know is when you have that conversation in public, you get people who come back and start going down a rabbit hole that was not true. And I'm totally okay with having this in public, but I also support the people who've been doing this work behind the scenes, that they're supposed to be doing, and the people that we delegate to do that. So, if we want to go forward, if you got message from our chair, which I have not, that she does not want to hold this up, and you're trying to move this forward, that also goes against the fact that this just came before us at the last hour. It was told to the public it'd be by Zoom? It's not. We knew that, it just didn't get changed. That's not fair to them. We probably would have had a lot more people here if we were going to be, do this in open. So, I don't really care which way you go today on this. I will do it in public, or if we believe it's important for us to wait until our chair is here, where she's not blindsided, then I'm okay with that, too. But I cannot continue to push this cart down the way. We have got to have decisions. We're not going to make everybody happy. There's got to be a decision. That's all I'm asking for.
My comment on this is, there was a draft sent out for legal opinion. I did not see anything in that that I felt we should keep secret from the public. There was nothing in there I seen that the public should not be privy to. So, my thought is that it should be discussed today and in public. As far as attendance of this board, I did talk to the chairperson on Friday, and some of this came up, and I said, "Well, let's put it off until you get back." She said, "No, we need to move forward on this." I had conversation with our chairperson this morning. Nothing different or contrary to that was mentioned this morning. David says he has conversation with her in the meantime to the opposite.
Yeah, I just told her this should be pushed back to, we have a special meeting next Wednesday, and she said, "Bring it up."
Okay, so she said, "Bring it up."
Yep.
I had conversation with her at 7:30 this morning. Nothing was brought up about putting this off. Yes, Mark?
This is what they have to say. I don't come near all... We should wait until next week.
Right now, we have to vote on whether we go into closed session or not. That's the first issue we tackle.
Let's do a vote.
So, let's run a vote on that.
The only thing that I will say is that your motion is not correct. You must state in the motion why you are going into closed session, so I would tell you that the full motion needs to include what was already written out on your agenda, otherwise, it's not a correct motion.
I'll make a motion that we enter into closed session as followed in the Open Meetings Act 267 of 1976, 15.267, for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged documents exempt from discussion or disclosure by statute.
I'll support that motion.
Roll call vote, please.
Milburn. Wolfson.
No.
Morley.
No.
Russo. Motion failed.
No.
I just want to caveat that the draft that you mentioned is under attorney-client privilege, which means...
Don't share it with the people.
We can't share it, and we can't say what's in it, so...
Well, that won't be hard to do, because I haven't seen it.
Next, to move forward, we need a motion to waive attorney-client privilege in this matter. Intertain a motion for that.
Can you state that motion one more time?
We need a motion to waive attorney-client privilege on this matter.
Is there any...
To discuss it in public.
I understand to discuss in public.
Go ahead.
Please.
To further explain, my recommendation was to go into closed session because, one, to discuss the draft legal opinion, which you have not made, but, but also because that allows a more frank discussion of the issues then can take place in a public setting. In making the motion about attorney-client privilege, it is my position that any questions you ask me are privileged information, and so if there is not a motion to waive attorney-client privilege, I will not speak to you on these issues today. I am happy to do that if you waive. However, I am not comfortable, so if, if there's a motion to waive attorney-client privilege for purposes of me answering questions today, I would like it to be that very specific. I do not recommend waiving under any circumstance the draft, the draft legal opinion that I provided to the chair, vice chair of this board. So, if there is a motion, I recommend that motion to be waiving attorney-client privilege solely for purposes of asking questions in a public setting today, and be mindful that those, because there was a vote of no, it won't be the frank discussion that otherwise would be in a closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
You understand now?
I'm pretty clear on it, Rex.
So, yeah, it's, so she can discuss with us today.
But she cannot discuss the document...
The draft document will not be discussed today.
Conversation in the audience at this point?
I do not believe we're going to discuss the draft that went forward.
So, what are we discussing? Can you review that?
How we're going to move forward with this?
Without seeing the document, how do we...
No, this is not about the, the legal opinion today. Now, now we're moving to how we're going to move forward. The turn, the attorney and Chase have one plan. There's other plans. The board needs to decide how we're going to move forward. This is to present all the information we can possibly present to the board to make a decision.
So, let me make sure I'm clear. Vice Chair, we will be hearing all the information...
All the information we can come up with, or anybody else can come up with.
Who has said that we are not allowed to discuss in public? Is that correct? We will not be seeing that document or talking about it?
The legal draft? No, we will not be seeing that today.
All right. So, we're only going to hear opinions of different options to move forward? Is that what you're asking us to review?
So, if I may?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think your question is a very good one. I would recommend that the release of any documents not be waived. I'm very uncomfortable with that because it was just a draft. I am comfortable with the board asking me questions of topics that may have been in the legal opinion to aid the board in making a decision and moving forward for purposes of discussion today, but I am not okay with releasing any documents, because it's in draft form only, and, and be happy to answer questions with Chase to, to provide information to the board.
I just don't know how I can ask questions on a document that I never, I've never seen.
We're not asking questions on a document.
I understand that, but how do they get, how do I ask questions at all without knowing what's been coming before me?
So, Commissioner, I, I definitely understand your concern, so I think what, what I would like to see happen or recommend to give the board, we, we serve at the pleasure of the board, is for your delegated authority and I to let you know what, based on the resolutions this board has already passed, what our plan moving forward is, and then based on public comment that you've heard, you might have some questions as to why we're doing it the way we're doing it, and we'd be happy to answer those.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
That's exactly what I had to make.
Well, thank you for making that clear.
I'm still...
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wolfson.
So, the current motion, I would ask...
Yeah, we're still under discussion on that motion.
Hasn't...
We haven't had a formal motion.
No, we haven't. No. This board can decide to do that? I'm just telling you what transpired from right in the chairperson.
So, if you would be so kind before deciding a week or not, let us give you some information. There is, there is a timeline in motion that is sensitive, that before you make a decision on going a week, let us give you that cursory information, and then you can decide stop or not, stop this discussion.
That is why the chairperson wanted to keep it moving, because if we have a... That's what we're having a meeting today for, so everybody hopefully can understand it.
Attorney, I'll be...
Hold on.
I need you to withdraw your motion.
And then make a new one to waive.
We're going to come up with a new motion on this. Go ahead, Chase.
I'll be frank. Hold on, we, we cannot move forward, Vice Chair. You have to remove your motion.
I removed the motion that I presented because it seemed to have been incomplete.
Okay, now what motion do we need?
Motion to waive confidentiality for purposes of asking questions during this meeting, but not waiving confidentiality with regard to the draft legal opinion.
Would you like to restate that, Vice Chair, so that we're clear on the motion that's on the table to the public?
My motion would have been moved to waive attorney-client privilege in this manner for the purpose of discussions on how we move forward.
That's not the same thing as what our attorney is...
But I just made the motion.
And not...
That was her recommendation, and I just made a motion.
I'll amend that motion to include not including the document in, that should be under attorney-client privilege. That should be the whole entire motion.
Do you need a little recess here?
You're making a motion to waive attorney-client priva, privilege regarding the attorney draft legal opinion, however, it needs to be amended to make it where you're just simply asking...
We're going to take a five-minute recess. We left off in regards to a motion. We now have that in order. I move to waive attorney-client privilege for the purpose of discussion regarding Houghton Lake, lake level matter. This motion does not include release of draft, the legal opinion draft.
I'll support that motion.
Roll call, please.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.
All right, now we're going to move forward and...
Mr. Chair, before we start, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
We're having two gentlemen in the audience. I'll be happy to point you out, Mr. Cotterman. You guys need to sideline the comments, the negative comments toward Mr. Hisong and toward this board. It's disrespectful to the public, it's disrespectful to us. Please keep your comments to yourself. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, we're going to entertain a presentation by the delegated authority and our attorney on how we perceive we should move forward with this process?
Okay. The reason why Darlene didn't want to postpone it is because they're originally back, when I came in last, there was talk of a public meeting to discuss all this with the public so they could ask whatever questions they want with me, Stacy, the engineer, on April 3rd. That mailing to meet, to actually get the people and have enough time to respond, has to go out tomorrow.
Which means it needs to get to the mailer today.
Which was the rush. That was why things needed to be discussed about what's happening. The other, the other hard date that is currently on the table is May 30th for the court hearing to hear the change of the lake order to follow the operations manual, which was discussed, again, last time I was here.
And, and let's break that down. So, this board has already passed a resolution to file a petition. So, we are prepared to file the petition. We have not yet, but we did call and reserve a date for the court. I am more than pleased to report that the court had one day available before the end of summer, and that is May 30th. And so, we've reserved that date, even though we haven't, which is a Friday, it makes it good for your constituents who live on the lake to come up, and so that is wonderful news, and so they have reserved that date pending us filing this petition. The, the advisory board and the delegated authority, I think have, is important to let people know before the court hearing date, before they get that in the mail, what is going on and why. And so, the plan is to have this meeting on April 3rd to give the public plenty of time to provide information, and so that we're prepared for a, a May 30th date. Why delay matters is if we can't get this mailing out to let everybody know, and it doesn't include that we're going to file a petition, then it's not being as transparent to the public in a timely enough fashion as possible. If we blow the May 30th date within decision, that means that there can be no deviation from the court order the entire summer this year, instead of having that opportunity, opportunity to do so. So, let me also be clear with the May 30th date, there's no change in the order. If this, if this board decides something different, let, let us file the petition to save that May 30th date. If this board decides something completely different, they have until the morning of May 30th to change their mind. But if we don't get this filed, then we're losing a season that is vital, and so we, that is, I think, why we're on the timeframe that we're on.
Stacy?
Yes.
I have before me a schedule of the next events that you're proposing. Could you share that with the board?
Sure, so...
I have a copy if you want it.
I could be reminded, that would be great.
Now, be aware it came out of...
Yep.
All right.
So, first, let's remind the board that we had an amazing meeting with the Lake Advisory Board. I think they asked very intelligent questions of, of the delegated authority, of me, of the engineer that you've chosen to assist you with this process. So, I, I think it was an exceptional meeting in gaining understanding and feedback, and I think the feedback was overwhelmingly in favor of what we are recommending to this board from the advisory. So, we, based on the resolution that this board has already passed, we have a petition ready to be filed this week with regard to a change, a revision to the 1982 order. So, the revision to the 1982 order, we'll, we'll talk about it following an oper, so no change to the winter level, no change to the summer level, but how we operate it to maximize having the summer level be at the summer level for the longest time possible, rather than hitting it once on the way up and once on the way down, like there's two days you hit the level. You know, to try to get it to more, to more that way, and Chase can go into greater detail about it. That requires a much more significant role of the delegated authority to manipulate the water control structure. That can be accomplished some with the current structure we have. It is possible to do that, to get a longer time at that summer level with the current structure. It'll be much more capable of doing that with the, a new structure, and the design of the new structure could make it even more so. So, this order and the possibility of having an operations manual, what type of structure you have, gives a lot more flexibility to be able to do that. And I will let Chase go into the, to the parts of, you know, why that makes sense, what that protects, all the things that goes into that. So, the goal is to get a mailing out today, file the petition this week to preserve that May 30th date that the court has graciously saved for us, and then to have a meeting at the high school on the evening of April 3rd to go through all of the engineering information, explaining why this is a different tact than we see in other lakes in... explaining why this is a different tact than we see in other lakes in the state. Why? Because there are so many unique things to Houghton Lake compared to other inland lakes in the state of Michigan, and why that is necessary where it might not be necessary for a small lake with a static drop structure to be able to do that. The engineers are still in the process of putting together the operation and maintenance manual. It is the goal to have a manual that is approved by Eagle and by this board. And so, it would be both, is what we are going to recommend that a court order include. And so, the court will have things that they're interested in in setting an order. You will have things that you're interested in setting in an order, and so will Eagle. And so, I think that is bringing all those balances of different stakeholders and of thoughts and interests in mind together. And so, as that will allow, an operations and maintenance manual being referred to in the order will allow you to change the operations manual without having to go back to court and therefore operate it better under the current situation, and then under the future situation with a new water control structure, and then as we get more data. I commend this board for, you know, using the hi-fi that allows you to have better data as we do this, and you get better at it, that'll give you more data that may be able to make an even better operations manual in the future. And so, I think why, what information we have and why that's important and makes it, I think, your delegated authority's life easier is for Chase to describe.
Okay, I'll be a little more frank, 'cause I'm not a lawyer. But the situation is very simple. It's similar to Higgins Lake. So, obviously, there's a lawsuit being threatened, or there's someone saying, hey, if you're gonna retain water or bank, then we're gonna take action. So, me, being an individual managing this, I'm gonna mitigate that from happening. So, it's gonna be, I'm gonna have to err on the side of low. Last year, we had a good summer, even though everyone was upset. It was a good summer because instead of going low, we had a good rain event in July that carried us through August. Otherwise, it would've been low all August long. I don't care how it's managed. But if I don't have an operations manual giving me a rulebook on how to manage it, I gotta err on the side of low. And then when people call me pissed, I'm gonna point my finger at you guys.
So, I'm no longer gonna use the terms water banking because that's not exactly what's going on. It's better management of it, given weather forecasting. It's not gonna be, this is how we're operated 24/7, no matter what the weather conditions are. So, it's gonna be different based on a wet year, a dry year, all those types of things. And so, there may be situ... A manual is necessary because we've been asked some questions with regard to, doesn't the current court order give you this flexibility? And my answer is no, the current court order does not give you that flexibility because you need variation language where you can intentionally, in some instances, that both Eagle and the county and the delegated authority deem safe to go above that in certain instances, recognizing that it's gonna go below, and also below that in certain instances, to best manage getting the lake level at the summer level for as long of a period as possible without balancing the interest of people who want it super high, and also balancing and protecting the interests of those people who may have water concerns with it being at a higher level often. And so, we think this manages all those instances better to allow for that to happen. But under the variation language passed by the legislature, that is not a purposeful variation. That's variations due to weather events, not on purpose, lower or higher, like that manual may allow for in certain circumstances, and neither does the 1982 court order allow for that.
I have a question?
Absolutely.
You talked about a petition to revise the court order.
Correct.
Are we putting numbers on this when we go to court?
That is a great question. And so, the court order will not change, in our opinion, what we have put together, a draft, is not to change the winter level and is not to change the summer level. And it won't even have a specifics of an operations manual in the order itself. It'll just say a manual that is approved both by Eagle and this county board of commissioners. That's very important, and I'm so glad you asked the question because what that manual looks like now will be different than when we have a new structure. And then it may be different based on the data you collect and the science where you learn, okay, we've done this for 10 years. We now know that we need to have the manual changed to better protect the low people, or we now know they are protected even after we go up a quarter inch. And so, it allows that flexibility based on data and based on the change in the structures. So, the manual itself will be referenced in the order, but the contents of the manual will not be part of the order.
Oh, am I correct in assuming petition in the court is to get the courts to recognize that there will be fluctuations in this lake, which already exist, in order to achieve legal level?
So, I'm gonna word it a different way. It will provide language in the order to allow your delegated authority to manage, operate the water control structures in a manner that best achieves the goal of the winter and summer level without violating the court level because there might be a day in the year that it's higher or lower, intentionally not based on a water event, but that is still safe to achieve maximizing those goals.
It offers... Jim?
I'm gonna save mine, mine's a little different question, if you wanna follow up.
What you're saying is it offers flexibility.
Yeah, it provides more flexibility for the delegated authority to do this job.
Yeah, so in the spring, the lake gets more water than leaves. And then in the summer, it's the opposite. Between evaporation and recharge, unless it rains, I'm talking like, you know, overland flow, there are streams. It evaporates faster than that lake recharges.
And so, as an example, at the April 3rd meeting, we'll be able to show winter level, summer level, where seawalls are, where houses are, how much space there is available before we're impacting any of those, to work from what is a safe amount of space if there's an impending storm event. Now, of course, this is not gonna offer full flood protection in any storm event. We could never do that, you know? But it will provide the balance of meeting that summer level in the summer months, but still offering, you know, some protection.
And of managed flexibility.
Correct. Correct, and I think with the number of, I don't wanna say threats, but vocalizations of, you know, if you do one thing off, we're gonna come after you. You know, you're putting your, without a manual that allows you to do that, you're putting your delegated authority in a very precarious position.
Commissioner Morley?
Yes. So, one of the questions that I received was about if we use the manual, which I'm, right now, I'm very much in favor of, and I think that for all the reasons you've just shared and the information that we have from our delegated authority and the position that has put him in because of others. So, is it true that we don't have to go back to the court if we have this operations manual? And the second question is, when would we need to go back to the courts in any scenario to change anything? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
I don't know if I asked that question.
And so, if, so first, I'm very pleased to say that Eagle is receptive to this concept because it's not anywhere else.
They're hard to please.
So, for laypeople, you're gonna learn all about what fetch is. I didn't know what, I didn't know what fetch was before Houghton Lake. All kinds of different terms that are unique situations to Houghton Lake that allows Eagle to kinda step outside the box to work with us to be able to do that. And so, in terms of old structure versus new structure, science, the operations and maintenance manual, we will not have to go back to court. And there's a lot of administrative expense when you go into court. That would be a savings in the future. If the instance where you would have to go back to court is if ultimately they decided with the new structure, we can save if. So, this is if. Don't anybody go have coffee and say Stacy said that we should do this, okay? The exact opposite. But hypothetically, if the new structure, and maybe sediment removal downstream, provides so much safety to the lower situated property owners that you could raise the summer level higher, then the summer level, we would go back to court to raise the summer level. That may be possible with science and activities in the future that isn't possible now. That would require going back to court, but just changing the operations manual would not.
And that's because we're really not asking for a change in the level. We're asking some for variance because you can't control the weather and to manage it the best we can to mitigate the risk for low or high.
To mitigate the risk for low or high and to try to achieve the summer level for as long in the summer as possible without going too far one way or the other.
Thank you.
And by the way, when we show you the engineers, that's still not gonna mean that we're gonna be at that level in a dry year as much as you would like to see. I mean, it's not possible, more possible under the new structure, but not... If we have a hot, dry year this year, no matter how much she's managing this under an operations manual, you know, we're still not gonna be able to achieve those things.
Have a good question?
And I like the manual because it gives me a rulebook by which to operate.
When Darlene and I first got together doing the lake committee stuff, that was one of the things that are in it. Each lake should have a manual on how to operate it. So, yes, we do need a manual on how to operate it. With this manual incorporate, we have talked about before with this engineering study that there's a minimum buffer zone there we need to maintain as far as inches so we can avoid potential flooding of properties. Now, the study did say, no matter what we do, there are times when properties are gonna be subjected to flooding.
If, with the right storm event, yes.
Correct. But in this manual, is it gonna include this buffer? I think the number was like 12 inches at one time?
Oh, for your free board?
Yes.
Yeah, the free board would be, I guess, gosh, how'd I put...
Safety factor, more or less.
Safety factor would be, you guys would present to Eagle, and Eagle would say yes or no, we're not gonna accept that. Because there's gotta be a point, no matter what's happening out there. Once the lake reaches a certain level, you open everything and you dump water as fast as possible.
Yeah, so in answering your question, yes. What that number is, we can't tell you today. So, the other thing to let you know, at the April 3rd meeting, we will not have a draft operation and maintenance manual to show people, but we are hopeful by the time we send the letters out for the actual court hearing that we'll have it on the website for everybody to be able to view, along with an explanation of it. Because like, I don't even have a great understanding of what free board means and et cetera. So, to be able to give you, or fetch, or all of these different things, like definitions and what that means. And so, in the future, people will be able to go on the website, see what the lake level is, see the manual, and understand how everything's gonna be working.
So, the manual will be developed for the public hearing. But part of the reason for the public hearing is to get more public input than just a commissioners' meeting.
But back to my question, in the engineering world, there is a number there that you do not wanna violate as far as free board? Is that correct?
A number out there that, this is what everyone, like a standard?
Yeah, is it like 12 inches?
I don't know that we have that number, that is...
Or is that specific for each lake?
I can be frank, 'cause I don't care. So, when I do permits for like, for example, Lake Marguerite, the number Eagle wanted to see for free board up against a coffer dam there was 12 inches. In my experience, usually it's 12 inches is what they wanna see.
But, but that, I don't want you to guarantee, this is lake, the hydrology is different.
So, more or less, Eagle has to bless that minimum free board?
Have to bless that minimum free board because once you establish that free board, you establish what you are able to retain to maintain summer lake level in July and August.
And that, in theory, is our safety factor.
That is your safety factor, yes.
So, a couple things. So, we would file, we would send out the letters today. We would file this week, April 3rd, property owner meeting, working on the manual the whole time. And to get, our goal will be to get Eagle approval of it, and hopefully your approval of it, now before we go into the court hearing. Court hearing, May 30th, and then that would allow May 31st for the delegated authority to start following that. Now, a couple things you heard in public comment was about the amount of money and the computation of costs being spent on the engineering. That was the engineering necessary to build the new dam. And so, it's not just engineering for this. That was the engineering to get us to the new project so we had that money in the bank and not have to take loans so we could assess for that ahead of time. So, I wanna be very clear that that was specifically in the computation of cost. If you go back through the PowerPoints, that lays that out.
The computation of cost is still on the Roscommon Lake Levels website under Houghton Lake. It's like the second lake dam.
Yes, and so, with regard to the other public comment about, you know, people do have the right to contest this in the circuit court. They, absolutely everyone has the right. Everyone will be invited to testify. But that's why we think these meetings, this public meeting is so important, and we invite everybody to do that. There is a balancing test that the court will have to review. There's obviously a lot of protections that Eagle will provide, and I'm sure that he will be interested in providing also. And so, and again, the petition does not change the summer level, does not change the winter level. It just provides more opportunity for the delegated authority to hit those targets more.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Not at this time, but thank you.
Is there anything you two would like to add?
No, not really, I guess. I mean, I could say more, but I probably would sit down.
All right, you know, you can say whatever. It's all good.
Thank you.
All right, you know, you can say whatever. It's all good.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. Now, to move on, I have some say on this. And then I would like the board to make a decision. When we started this process, it was to go to the courts and ask for banking water. Now, I realize our resolution does not specifically state that, but that was the board's objective. Since then, the studies come out, and we found it wasn't prudent to do that. Now, it's moved to developing an operation manual, how to operate the lake, and asking the courts to acknowledge, and our study showed that, that lake will fluctuate all the time regardless, but to acknowledge fluctuations and use that to our advantage to mitigate flooding and to try and achieve a normal lake level in the summer. That's, so the objective on this whole thing has changed, of course, and we've heard comments from people saying, don't do this. And we've heard comments from people saying, yeah, do that. One comment to the board really stands out, and I reviewed it again this morning. He thought Chase did a wonderful job of achieving the lake level last year. So, we do have the option of just maintaining the lake as it was done last year without going to court and asking for a court's blessing on it. I guess...
I'm sorry, vice chair.
You lost me there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. This is an option of how we move forward that was presented today.
Correct.
And it is different than the course we initially took in November.
Heard that.
Okay. There are other options in how to maintain that lake level without going to court. It's a board decision on how we go forward. One option is maintain the lake level, the delegated authority maintains it just as he did last year. We had one person came to this board, I believe it was at the last meeting, and said it worked great, you know, you want it that way. That is an option to be explored by the board also. What I'm looking for today is some kind of a motion by the board of how we move forward. Do we move forward with this plan? Do we move forward with just operating the structure the way it was last year and maybe revisiting this when we have a new structure and we know more capacities? I'm just looking for the board to give direction on how to move forward.
Just as a reminder, this is under discussion for your work session as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we had put it under discussion for work session.
Absolutely.
I'll talk, perfect. Okay, so what Rex is saying is we can continue with this hearing, the court hearing and the operations manual, or you can say no based off the study and just run her the same way it was ran last year. My advice on that, I'll give advice because whatever. One, last year, someone said was happy, you also got a petition relatively quick based on that lake level last year. Again, this is why you guys make decisions, not me. That, that's what you have to look at on the other side. What the study shows is no matter what happens, if you get 100-year rain event, you're probably going to flood people, even if you're at legal lake level. That's another thing needs to be looked at. There's, there's really no good decision here, so, but you guys got to make a decision on what to do. The only good decision is that a new structure is going to be able to do a better job, period. But you're two years out.
Mark?
Our decision should be based on science and technology. I believe that we should move forward, working compatible with Eagle. We need to work with Eagles, make sure that our decision is based on science and technology, not just what we think, but what we know.
I agree with you.
And as we've heard, we do have an opportunity to have this discussion in our work session as well. This purpose.
But in work session, we can't make a motion to move forward with one way or another. Right now, we could make a motion on how to move forward. And it is, like Stacy said, you know, to get everything in line before the court hearing, there's timeframes that need to be met. And she's prepared to meet them should that's the avenue we take.
Right, and I don't believe that we need any motions from this board to move forward. We already have those authorizations and that's.
Correct. Yeah, I think what Rex is a motion.
Yeah, the motion is just to understand the direction this has been taking has changed. And now we're going in a different direction as opposed to asking the courts to bank water. Now we want to make an operation manual that mitigates flooding and it mitigates losing too much water in the summer.
We could even have that motion on the table 30 days from now. It's not going to occur.
Let them move forward.
Yeah.
As long as we have a general consensus that, yeah, this is the way we want to move forward.
What I think Rex's concern is, is that we're not banking, but to better maintain summer level, you're going to have to bank something or retain something.
Well, in the same token, in the spring.
Yeah.
You've got to drop water, even if it's below winter level to avoid flooding sometimes.
So there's, there's caveants to, you know, either way, but it's, yeah. There's going to be things done different. That's why it's nice to have the manual, in my opinion, because there's a rulebook by which things are done then.
And if we.
Manual is imperative.
Yes. And if we move forward with the plan presented today, then my only caveat to that would be, before it goes into court, I see a manual and I see what we're going to ask the courts for.
Absolutely.
I didn't hear that we wouldn't, based upon what I've heard today.
I didn't hear we wouldn't, but I want to make sure we do.
I think it's important, Mr. Chair, not only do we see it, but the public sees it.
Yeah, but again, I'll be frank with you guys, in that manual, you're going to have to pick an elevation at which you hold water above legal lake level to maintain your summer. That, that has to be done.
Yep.
And the engineer's not going to tell you what that is because again.
No, I don't expect the engineer to tell me that.
If you get 100-year flood, you could flood people. 100-year rain event, you could flood people.
But I do expect in the manual to be a safety zone there.
Yeah, there, there has to be a safety zone, but again, that's going to be, there's amount, there's a, every, every little bit you raise it, there's a risk. There's like, you know, a percentage, it goes up of something bad happening. You got to decide where you want that to be.
Well, we need to tell them to move forward with their plan or not.
Again, I say you keep the pub, you keep the public hearing because that's where all this can be laid out to people.
We could wait till next month.
Yes.
We're throwing too much stuff out there right now.
Yeah, well, the idea is try to, try to.
But right now, we're throwing too much out there.
Yep.
All right. Stick to one thing.
Who is it?
I am very.
Please, we move on with this plan?
Yeah.
Chair, I'm very okay moving forward with this plan. I really support making sure that that public meeting, and there is a timeline. They have to have that information out there if they're going to come and attend that and hear all the information that you guys, for much longer than me, have been able to absorb and listen to. So I, I support this and it gives us a way to do something in the interim until we have different structures, because I think that's your ultimate goal down the road.
Okay. One last comment.
Sure.
Based on what was submitted for the original bid from Brian Newhoff, it, I don't think it actually had a report on there. The report essentially was supposed to be the operations manual. So my question to you guys.
You mean versus a formal report?
There's a formal report. The report was essentially supposed to be an operations manual based on, of how to manage based on the data.
Does any board member want to see a formal report from the engineer?
More information, the better.
Yeah.
Then we should have one.
Okay.
Much does that cost?
I don't know. I'll ask.
I think that's an important bit of information to find out before you make that decision, though, you guys. The same.
I mean, I, yeah, I don't, I mean, again, in my, in my mind, the figures tell the story. What, what the formal report will be was just describing those figures.
Would board members be comfortable with our delegated authority compiling all this information and put it into one booklet for us?
Yes. I can do that and, and describe what's each one saying and what it means.
It'd satisfy me and I think it'd satisfy the public.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
And also just making sure that that doesn't hold us up on our timeline, that we need to get this letter out to the public.
Well, that was another thing, if you have them do a report, then the manual gets put behind, but, and.
This way is workable.
There are other things that weren't originally presented. I'd like to present like, one, managing the gates a certain way, as if you're retaining, you know, what those lines actually look like lake level on average in different years.
I just want to make sure all board members has all information in front of them in a manner that they can process.
Yep.
Sounds good.
And if we're good with that, then we'll just have Chase compile this information in one packet or booklet or whatever for us.
I can do a packet, packet, and then I'll include it in the agenda meeting, in the agenda, and then that way the public has it. You guys have it and I can present it to you as well and you can ask questions on it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chase.
Any other discussion? Hey, we're going to move on to delegated authority update on Houghton Lake. Is there anything else you need to add on that, Chase?
I'm thinking, I think ice is going to go pretty soon.
How are we setting stage for spring runoff or whatever?
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, you guys are looking at the snow like I am. I think we've had a lot of melt already. We're three inches below summer lake level right now. We have rain coming this weekend, but it looks like a half inch. I, I don't, we won't hit, I don't know when ice is going to come off, but I'm trying to anticipate starting to bring up the legal lake level because ice is going to go pretty soon, I would think, a couple of weeks. That's it on.
Delegated authority update on Lake St. Helen?
Quiet.
We have moved forward beyond the boring samples?
We've moved forward beyond the boring samples. There was the initial meeting with the DNR and Eagle and they were static about, you know, just having a summer lake level and getting rid of the winter lake level.
And what's our next step?
Designing the structure and then present that to them because they're going to want to see, now what are you going to do to maintain this one lake level year round?
And so far, they're on board with the spillway?
Yes, yes. So I talked to Luke.
So that's the direction we're going at this point?
The direction we're going. So I talked to Luke is you essentially design something, present, this is what we're presenting to maintain this, this lake level.
Do we have a timeframe on that at all?
I would, I would think probably sometime in the spring. I would say spring.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's St. Helen, all right.
Next, we're an update for Higgins Lake. We have submitted the permit to make some changes in the stream bed with, and we're waiting to hear from Eagle on our permit application. Any questions on that?
Do you have an idea of when you might hear from them?
None whatsoever. They don't tell you that. Do we have any motions or resolutions from that today?
Not so far.
Hey, we're open for public comment? Yes, come forward. There's some paperwork left up there.
Thought it might have been my copy. I will be, I'll try to for you that, Jody. Craig Cotterman, Houghton Lake. I keep Chase kept referring to a 100-year flood elevation. Rex, you know what that is, 100-year flood elevation. You should all know what it is. I didn't see Brian and Newhoff's interpretation of what the 100-year flood elevation was. But if you look at the data, the lake level statistics that we've been keeping now for 40 years, 42 years, we're at flood stage every three to five years. So we don't have a 100-year flood elevation as of today that I know of. I don't believe Brian and, I don't believe Newhoff come up with a 100-year flood elevation. I could meet with you after this. Pardon? So we don't have a 100-year flood elevation as that? Okay. I would like to see the 100-year flood elevation that you keep talking about. We, we have one, we have floodplain data. I think, I think it's quite clear where the floodplain is. I'm in floodplain A, I'm adjacent to a lake. And if you're talking about banking water or free board, aren't you, isn't that the same thing? We're going to bank six inches, or we're going to have 12 inches of free board. You know, there's our 18 inches, that's flood stage. The data is there, the science is there. And I don't know of any scientific principle that would say, yeah, let's bank water when we're at flood stage every three to five years. There's no logic here. And you also intend to raise a lake level or bank water without a environmental study. We have wild rice. We have a shoreline that looks like a war zone. I went fishing the other day, I went along the shoreline, and the chunks of concrete, building materials, it's not a shoreline that Houghton Lake should be proud of. People have their manicured seawalls that can afford it, but there's a lot of people that can't afford repairing their seawall, and I'm one of those. I have 80-foot of seawall and it's, it needs repair. And with a legal lake level, I could take it out. I don't have a flooding problem with a legal lake level. And Mr. Melbourne, I, I didn't hear your comments, but I can, I can look at them at Zoom. But I think respect is something people deserve. Criminal activities of this board, banking water, destroying my property. When the storms come, we fear these storms, and you intend to do damage to me and my family. You want me to respect your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Nathan Floyd again, 1-2-2-2-1, East Houghton Lake Drive. Just closing thought, if I was going to purchase a property, I would make sure it's not in a floodplain before I purchase that property. Otherwise, it might flood. So, just some food for thought. If you don't like the city you live in, move to a different city. If you don't like the property you live in, move to a different property. I like the property where I'm at right now. If I can't get my lake level back up, it's going to be tough to sell a lake property if you don't have any lake. All I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Dave Bisby, 415 Old Trail Drive. As per the gentleman's comment saying if bought property and didn't check out the floodplain level, well, the floodplain levels have all been changed over the years. And in the mid 80s, they did a total rework of the whole thing. So if people bought the property before that change in the floodplain, why would you expect them to have to sell because they don't want to be flooded? Next is the fact that when the meeting took place in Marky Township with Brian Newhoff and the advisory board, over 10 times Brian Newhoff mentioned, depends on how much risk you want to take. And that's what's on your shoulders. Because you're not on the lake. You have no risk to yourself. Others do. And you can't take for granted, it's okay to flood those that are in the areas that get flooded. Because things have changed. Floodplains have changed. A lot of these properties are owned by families going way back. So it's not just the few that have the boding issues. That's not the whole cause of the lake. You have a major ecology that you have no idea what's going on because you've not done a study, but yet you want to mess with it. That's my point. I need to have you think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We see no other public comment. Entertained a motion to adjourn? Mark, did you have something to say? Make, entertain a motion to adjourn? Adjourn?
I'll second it.
No move? We'll return at 10 o'clock for our scheduled 9 o'clock meeting? Correct? I fell asleep. First thing on the agenda is budget management policy? I believe it's been presented because everybody had an opportunity to review it. And does anybody have comments on it?
Vice Chair, would you like for the public to kind of give an overview of what this is about and why we're working on that?
Hey, the budget management policy is come about because we've been reviewing our policy book and some policies that we do not have and some policies need to be updated. And apparently, we did not have a policy on how we manage the county if departments are going to go over budget. And so this is what we came up with or has been presented to the board to accept. And basically, it's, it's addressing that once the budget's been set, if there's a change in that budget that's drastic, it needs to come to our attention. if there's a change in that budget that's drastic, it needs to come to our attention.
Well, you would need to go to the controller first.
Correct, correct. The controller is the one to bring it to us.
Right, and it is stated that, second to last paragraph.
It's, it's not for departments to come and ask us for a change. It's, it's a tool for the controller to use in how to proceed.
And if I understand what we've read in our packet, it's not only if they go over, but under and how those monies get transferred.
How those monies get used, yes, correct.
I appreciate, because this was in the minutes of the last meeting. It's worded a little confusing, but it did include what I had asked for, that the budget transfers from the general fund or between departments must be presented to the board for approval prior to the transfer taking place. So that was added, so I felt positive that that was put in here, so that we were understanding where it comes and goes.
So your concerns have been addressed in this?
Yes. My second question is really around, this goes around the Public Act, the very last sentence, Public Act 621 of 1978 in the County of Roscommon Personnel Manual. Have we made sure that it's also in the Personnel Manual? Have we cross-referenced that yet? Just to make sure there's no discrepancies.
I am ninety-nine point nine percent sure that there is nothing in there specific in the Personnel Manual about if you go over budget.
So am I reading it correctly that that should match for both, if that statement is in there?
That is the way that is worded. Um, I think that the way that they're saying it is, tell subject and your responsible officials and employees to discipline actually, is that the disciplinary action as outlined in the Personnel Manual, not disciplinary action so far as you went over budget and therefore this is what's gonna happen. I think they're just saying that we have a generalized, hey, you could be written up, you could be this, you could be that, for disciplinary action. But I would honestly, I would totally strike that out of the Personnel Manual because to me, the budgetary stuff is all outlined in that Public Act. And really, what teeth do you have as the Board of Commissioners to discipline an employee of the sheriff?
Right, we don't have that.
So they're not subject to the Personnel Manual in most considerations, so.
Well, that last paragraph really acts like we have some ability to take disciplinary action. So are you recommending we don't have that entire paragraph?
Nope, just the very last part about the County of Roscommon Personnel Manual. I would say that the Public Act 621 of 1978 delineates what can and cannot happen. Just as for instance, if I were to go over budget and you were to determine that the payment that I made that put me over budget is not a viable, you're not going to pay for it, then I would be personally responsible for paying that.
And that is covered, if I could?
Yep, that is under Public Act 621. So I would say maybe everybody, I can get a copy of Public Act 621 of 1978 out to all of you guys this week.
That would be helpful.
You can purview that, okay.
And just make sure we cross-reference that Personnel Policy, just to make sure if we haven't read that, if it's out there in that Personnel Manual, that we're not, that the messages isn't conflicting, that they mirror and that they're accurate on both sides. Because reading one and not reading the other, we may have missed something. That's my only thoughts on it. Other than that, I was pretty good with the way the policy was written.
Mark?
We've passed a motion that we have an eighteen percent budget stabilization fund. Would it be in our best interest and for the public's best interest and for transparency issues to ensure that that is mentioned in this document? Not?
No.
Like, kind of a shell.
Not in a, not in this particular one. It could be mentioned, but somewhere else.
I, I see this as, excuse me, I see this as a way we deal with a budget that is going over or under during the year. I don't see this as a way to discipline someone.
I'm not alluding to?
And I don't, we have a fund balance policy, which is a separate issue.
And that fund balance policy can change more frequently than your budget management policy. Because that percentage may be different.
Correct, correct. Every year it could be different.
Be on how do we handle
How do we handle?
Or under as we proceed through the year. So we have a better ability to make better decisions on budgets moving forward.
And this came about from history because at one meeting prior to you, it came out that a department was over budget. And my question was, do we have a policy on how we handle that? No, we did not. So it leaves our administrator kind of on her own. At least this way she can go and say, okay, this is the way we handle it. I view it as maybe making her job easier. I don't know.
Clear direction always makes somebody's job easier, so I agree with that.
But should we allude to it? The reason being is if I was the public and I came in to see Jody Valentino and said, what is your budget management policy? I'd want to walk out with something that would say a number, that you're at least trying to achieve. Otherwise, it seems to me that a lot of good words, a lot of well intentions, but again, I'm not adamant that we need this, but I think it would be add value to it if we did put eighteen percent, based on a motion that this board made. More in the document.
Well, we already have that.
We know that, but the public wouldn't know that.
Chair Censor drafted this with all of your input and pasted it together. And so this is, this is our first draft. I have not made it into the pretty format yet until it came before you because I don't like to type things eight times. So I can, I can do that when we break it down into like the purpose. Hey, these are our goals and in order to ensure those. So keeping that kind of general language in the purpose of the policy, I think I can make your concern be addressed without making it a part of the formal policy.
And that's what I'm asking, Mr. Chair, just that it's mentioned because the public has a right to know what our goals are. Not just a bunch of flowery words that sound good, but they should be able to walk out with a document that says the board's intention is to maintain eighteen percent fund balance. I think that's the goal, the whole goal of this budget management policy is to keep our eighteen percent fund balance.
Well, as Commissioner Morley stated, that can change year to year. So perhaps we need something in it that this addresses that, you know, is also a reflection on our fund balance?
Policy.
Policy?
Because we already have a policy in place.
Yeah.
This is not
See without the
This is to align with our fund balance policy.
With that, I'm just looking for some kind of
I'll make it pretty.
Clarity. I think at the end of the day, people wanted to know what the number is. I, I would. And I do.
I, I'm very comfortable with our controller adding some verbiage that doesn't land us on one specific number that will change and to make sure that we're addressing something in this reference, in reference to the other policy that we already have. We can always hand that out as well. So I'm good at seeing the next one.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to make sure we address that if we're gonna put in there things about disciplinary action, then
Remove that.
Definitely is in line with everything else, or we admit it.
And we'll each get a copy of that Public Act, so thank you, Jody.
Is that in on this? Any more comment on this? Now we're up to recommendation for appointment of assistant manager, emergency manager. I believe Vanessa is gonna present this.
Good morning. Vanessa Varner, Assistant, or Emergency Management Director for Roscommon County. I have with me the candidate that I'd like to present to you, Martin Potter, for Assistant Emergency Management Director. We went through a process. We took applicants externally. We had a total of nine, seven that we reviewed with, that were interested when they found out what the hours were. Three that were interviewed. And Martin here was our candidate that we chose after looking at the references. Commissioner Morley was a part of the interview panel. He can probably speak more to some of the processes that we went through. But he comes with thirty-three years of experience, both from the Air Force and then also with Detroit Arsenal Fire. He can explain a little bit about himself, but he's definitely very well qualified for this role.
Morning. Name's Martin Potter. Appreciate being able to present to you this morning. As she stated, I have thirty-three years of experience. First eight years was spent with the Air Force as a firefighter. After my second enlistment, I became a civilian firefighter with the Department of Defense and the Department of Army, working at the US Army Garrison Detroit Arsenal. Progressed through the ranks there, where it culminated in 2021 to be in the fire chief. And I am retiring at the end of March from that role. Looking forward to utilizing that knowledge and skills to hopefully help out Roscommon and the Emergency Management Division and look forward to operating.
Any questions?
Thank you for your service to our country and our state, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard.
Vanessa, to your knowledge, has everybody seen a copy of his resume or had an opportunity?
I distributed it to
Everybody got that? Okay.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'll add, because I was a part of that process and I think as we talk about explaining things to our public as well, I think it's important, how that process went was spot-on. I was the only commissioner that was a part of that role, which, thank you for letting me be on it. But I think when you go through that process and you look at nine people who came forward, seven said, eh, that doesn't work for me, backed out, interviewed all three. And with the interview panel that Vanessa set up, I think that all the questions were, it was a fair process. It was overwhelming, honestly, even though we had three incredibly good candidates. You know, Martin, you stood out. Your ability and your experience and how you balance what we also have in our director today, I think is where the final decision was made for her. I mean, it was her decision, but it, she had full support on what you were able to bring to the table and I'm, I totally support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is our strategic plan of action review.
I think we're on the Northern Lakes?
Yeah.
Application?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. We've put out an ad looking for people who wanna serve on the Northern Lakes Board. I believe it's twenty, when that is the deadline. I think we have, last I heard, we have one applicant?
One new applicant.
One new applicant. We still, so we have a total of two?
A total of two, correct.
At this point. And after the deadline, then we will probably invite people here to present themselves and review it.
Sounds good.
I might wanna add when, the copy, when we send it out for information, because I had to ask Jody because I wasn't sure. The deadline is in there, but letting those people know that when is it gonna come on a work session and when might they need to be available to be here in public to speak? Because we're, that's our new process that we wanna meet these people. None of that is written, so you might run into a situation where they don't know and they can't come to meet before us and then you prolong that decision, so.
We have to give them ample notice time before.
But I think when you send out the notice, it might help put some of those deadlines on there. I don't, it's just my thought.
Good point.
In other words, explain the process better to them?
Just those timelines, if we're gonna be, if we want them to be here at a meeting per our request, they should probably know that when they start to submit their application with their deadline, so that they can make sure that they're available for that.
Only fair to the applicant.
Any other comments on that issue?
Nope.
Okay, now we're gonna do a strategic plan review.
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
You know, we're running late from our other meeting. We're, the chair's not here. Can we postpone this line into our next work session?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Good idea.
We could have a full board and
I'm good with that.
More thoughts.
I, I do believe we need to extend this. But she did go through an awful lot of work to take all your feedback and put it into this document. And I was just curious if we could at least take a few minutes to say, what about this right now is working, what's not? And then we can come back and have more discussion when we have more time, because it does need more discussion. But she sent us quite a bit and we were all supposed to give her feedback before today. So I would just like to get the feedback or hear what your thoughts are on it.
Okay.
Well, we had one board member that was not available at the time that went down.
It's okay.
And, you know, it would be nice to make sure they've had time to review and submit Thursday.
Are we only missing one?
I gave, I gave Darlene three items.
You were gone, I get it.
Rex was looking at me like I was
No, I'm looking to see what you're gonna say.
I had a few meetings this week, so I just you're cutting me overtime and
I wouldn't wanna try and exclude anybody from having input on it.
Not a problem.
But if the board's comfortable with putting it off because of that issue, I'm fine with it. If you wanna move on, let me know.
Do we have any idea of how lengthy our next work session would be? What all is on there yet? I know we were trying to create a template.
We don't think we know of anything that's gonna be on there yet?
Just so that we time it for the public, if this is gonna be a long meeting, then we might wanna put a different time for the next meeting start. I don't think that's fair to the public to
I never know what to expect.
We don't have lake level, we don't have lake level meeting next month.
Best of my knowledge, we do have two things that will be on the work session, neither of which I think should be very lengthy. One is National Safe Boating Week with Mr. James Munger.
It's about five minutes.
Yep, and then we did have a request that came through from our prosecutor's office to speak with the board about, it is Victims Advocate Day
Okay.
Awareness. So that would also be on there. I don't think there's anything
I'm fine putting it on the next work session as long as we have time for discussion. We don't just keep pushing it off.
Yep.
Cool.
Thank you.
Then the number five, lake level management, Holton Lake discussion. I think we've already covered that. Unless somebody else wants to bring something up?
It, it might be helpful, Rex, for, Vice Chair, sorry, to tell the rest of the public that might not have been here, how that went down, just a quick summary so that they're aware, since we're not discussing it right now in work session.
We had a presentation by our attorney in this matter and also the delegated authority on how they thought we should move forward with a operation manual. It was decided by this board to continue moving forward in that direction. We expect to see a manual presented to us prior to going and asking the court to bless this process, more or less.
Excuse me.
You have something to say?
No.
We acknowledge that the lake level on Holton Lake is gonna fluctuate. I mean, our engineering study said that. Regardless, it's gonna fluctuate. The, in the management plan is to minimize the fluctuation, high or low. And so that's the direction we're moving forward on that. Anything else?
Good job.
We don't have on here adjournment, but I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yep, that's you.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we're done with that.
What time's our next meeting?
I don't know, I haven't looked at the clock yet.
Okay.
Ten-thirty, we'll be
Melbourne?
Here.
Morley?
Here.
Russo?
Here.
Wolfson?
Here.
Censor absent.
Before we ask for approval of the agenda, I think everybody has in front of them the motions. There has been a change on them. I apologize for the last-minute change. I think you'll see everything that's highlighted has been added to that motion, number one. If any, if anybody needs time to review that, just
So move with revisions, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Also on, on revision of the agenda is item F and approval of the consent agenda. We do not have a clerk We do not have a clerk or retro deeds update. Everybody com-
Still recognize, Mr. Chair.
Everybody comfortable with that? I'll attend, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Call.
Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo carried.
Next item is approval of a consent agenda. The consent agenda has in it the meeting minutes from February twenty-six, twenty-five, and from the special meeting of February twenty-six, twenty-five. Class As and claims and accounts, which I think we all were sent out that. Everybody get that information? We also had correspondence A through G, and we had monthly department reports from the EDC directors, January and February report, and the 2025 February Sheriff's Activity Report. And also, we had an administrator controller report. Would anything, anybody like anything out of that consent agenda pulled out and discussed? And will we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Call, please.
Need discussion.
Discussion.
I was going to say, any discussion. Would you, as we've done in the past, make sure that the audience knows what that correspondence A through G were and what they entailed?
I don't have them in front of me.
Would you like me to do that for you?
If you have that information, please.
We had in our correspondence, A was from Mishta. It's a first generation down payment for first-time homebuyers grant information. Our MAC update is on B. We had a letter from Mr. Smolka about the Holton Lake level. We had the GIS certification program through the MSU. Another Mishta piece of information around a master leasing program for the homeless shelters. And I'm not going to say this name right, Armhein, around MSU extension meeting for some meeting dates to, to come and join. So that was really a part of the correspondence that we're approving today.
I appreciate that. That brings to question, is correspondence available to the public online?
In our packet.
It is in the complete packet that's online that they can download.
Okay, so the public does have access to it also that way. All right. Any other discussion?
In fact, Mr. Chair, I think we should do that every meeting.
To my knowledge, since I've been, that's what I've heard from the chair every meeting, just a review of what that is. That's what gave me the idea, because I've heard it.
Well, we're supporting the recommendation.
Gotcha.
Do we want to put that in our board rules?
Not necessarily, Mr. Chair.
Just a normal way of operating? Okay.
So the public understands that it'll be done every meeting.
With that, any other comments or discussion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through G, as presented.
We already have a motion in a second.
All right, sorry.
Call.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We're now at public comment. Does anybody in the public have, like, to make a comment to the board? This is on agenda items only?
Mr. Chair, with your permission, Roberta Carey is the chairman of COA, and she has some comments she'd like to make. She's been waiting since ten o'clock to, to make an appearance.
You could put her under visitors and that would fit your board rules. Which is next, Roberta.
Would you rather do that than not wait? Okay. Let's, let's run. All right, any other public comment? Hey, we have a visitor that'd like to be recognized and speak?
Get some back. Do a little dance.
Good morning. I am Roberta Carey. I am the chair for the Roscommon County Commission on Aging. And I'm here this morning to let you guys know of a couple of little changes that have occurred within our agency. And they regard our employee benefits program. Approximately the third week of January, we were informed by our insurance company of health insurance for five employees that were on the health insurance program. Have a nice, large increase for this year, as well as a projected increase for the following year. The RCCOA could not continue with that program for our five employees, especially considering one of the five was dropping off because they were reducing their hours, which meant we weren't eligible for the gap program or the bridge. So it was going to affect the other four. Plus, we weren't offering it to any new hires to begin with. So over the past two weeks, we've had special meetings. We thought, okay, we're going to do this. And it turns out, we couldn't do that in order to affect our employees from being able to utilize the marketplace under the Affordable Care Act if we offered any type of group insurance. And the last four that were on the health insurance program said they couldn't afford the deductibles that would fall within our budget. So as of yesterday, we've eliminated our health coverage that would, for those four employees, that would still be eligible. However, we did grant a three percent pay raise to all our employees, hopefully to help make up for our budget shortfalls based on the major increase. We had budgeted for a ten percent increase, and our increase was going to come in around twenty-five percent. And we just, we just couldn't do it. So here to inform you of that, just before you hear it from a disgruntled employee or anybody else, even though we don't technically have to tell you, but we're informing you anyways. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Appreciate you bringing that to us.
Also, keep in mind, the RCCOA board meetings are the third Wednesday of each month at 1:00 P.M. With the exception of July and December, we do not have board meetings. So you're all welcome to attend. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitors? Unfinished business. We have airport runway lighting project, sponsor contract. Our airport manager is going to present that to us?
Oh, I was going to give him five. You have no more than five minutes.
You should have jumped in under visitors, there's no time limit.
Okay, good morning. Thank, thank you for having me. This is, I just want to explain all these few documents. Anytime you do a federal project on the airport, these documents will always be there. It's one step in, in the bigger picture of making the project happen. The way the funding works is for a, typically, a standard federal, state, and local project is broken out. The FAA pays ninety-five percent of the project, the state pays five percent, and the local, in this case, Roscommon County, pays five percent. Okay? So this particular project, the runway lighting project, the total project cost, it's estimated at this time, is five hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Five sixty-one, five sixty-seven. Our county share of that is twenty-eight thousand, eighty dollars. Okay, five percent. So the, the three pieces that, that come along at this time are the sponsor contract, you all have it. Okay? And basically, it's a contract between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the airport sponsor, which is Roscommon County. Okay? And basically, without reading forty-some pages here, basically, you know, MDOT wants to make sure that the county is going to be financially responsible for their share. Okay? Now, our share has already been approved by you all in, in the airport budget. Okay? So this is paperwork that needs to be finished and returned back to MDOT so that we can, the project is happening this year. Okay? And so there's a lot of pieces and parts that have to fall into place. Okay? As part of the sponsor contract, we have what's called the sponsor certification. Okay? It's a number of pages, questions and answers, basically to make sure there's no conflict of interest, it's a drug-free workplace, it's Eric's not getting paid under the table from contractors. Okay? So this has to be filled out and sent back with the sponsor contract. Okay? The final piece is the resolution that you all are going to approve, or I'm asking you to approve. The resolution is, basically, it's a statement saying, saying that yes, the county does enter into contracts with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the airport, and that the county chairperson is authorized to sign any of those documents. Okay? So three pieces, the resolution, the sponsor certification, and the sponsor contract. Okay? Every project that we have done on the airport in my eighteen years, it's happened every time. Okay? Now, it doesn't happen, usually it might be once a year that we see these, could be every other year, depending on our projects and the way they play out. Okay? But we're going to have two this year. We're going to have the runway lighting project and the new taxi lane project. Okay? So you're going to see these same documents later this year. Okay? It's the same process. Okay? So it's already been approved by, by you Board of Commissioners, the, the county share of this project. Okay? If we can talk about the taxi lane project for a minute, that is a hundred percent federal and state funded. There is no county match. That project is about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar project to, to put in a new taxi lane for a four-unit T-hanger coming in 2026. Okay? And that, that project is also a hundred percent funded by federal and state money. There is no local match. There's no local match for the new taxi lane, there's no local match for the four-unit T-hanger. Okay? Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
You said there's a bunch of paperwork that has to be filled out. Whose responsibility is to fill that paperwork out?
So MDOT, they, I am the authorized signer at this time. Okay? And I'm going to change that to, to help keep this moving along. I will sign it, and I will resubmit it back to, to MDOT. Okay? Moving forward, I'm going to get with MDOT, and my preference would be to have either the county controller and/or the county chairperson be the authorized signer. Moving forward, from this one. I've signed these in the past, but I think it's more prudent for people up here that have more power than I do and more responsibility than I do to, to, to sign those.
Well, yeah. It sounded to me like it was kind of a review of your operations, how you operate there, some of it. And...
These?
The paperwork you have to fill out and submit, you know, like, drug-free and so forth. I mean, it's...
It, it, it's standard. It's standard. I mean, none of this has changed in, in my eighteen years. It's the same, same things.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions? That's it?
Vice Chair, I just want to make sure that I, if I understood this correctly, this is exactly how these motions that are before us today are reading, is exactly what you've said. So, and I also underst, I would understand that, let's say, going forward, that a chair of the county commissioners would be helpful in this, that day-to-day questionnaire, it would be a partnership in filling out the document, it's just somebody else is going to be the signer.
Absolutely. Yes. And you all, you all would review it, of course, you know? I mean, you're happy to read the, the entire, you know...
That was a lot of paperwork. I tried to read it all, and it started to go.
And everything, everything now is done digitally, you know? I mean, Jody was nice enough to print these off and, and make sure you all have them. I get them digitally, and they will be signed digitally moving forward. This group will be the authorized signer and not the airport manager, whoever that may be.
Mark?
I'd like to offer a recommendation, maybe have both sign. Bottom line is, it's not unusual to have two people sign a document. The chairperson could sign, airport manager, that way both are in concert. It's important that both are in sync, so they work together to ensure the documents are sealed and delivered. I understand Mr. Gerus' concern as far as having the chairperson sign it, but I think the airport manager should also sign it, too.
Well, I'm the closest to the operation, let's say.
I think both, both should sign the document.
And...
Yeah, I just...
That's a decision you all will have to make.
I was, when I questioned this, it was like, what oversight is there on this? You know what I mean? And moving forward, he's already got that figured out, so.
On your electronic signature documents, is there a spot for two signatures or just one?
It's one line for the authorized airport sponsor.
But we could have a system in place where it's reviewed by...
Absolutely.
But I can, I can, I'll, I'll have to get with Natalie at MDOT to, to, to change it over. I'll ask her about, yeah, I, can I sign it and have one of the Board of Commissioners sign it as well? If, if that, if that would...
I, I know Eric, with your permission, Mr. Chair. I know in the past, when I was airport, you know, air person, I mean, there was times years and years ago that I would sign documents, there would be other signatures on the documents. That was probably five, ten years ago. It was always another, other person signing. It wasn't just myself, it was Eric would be on there, maybe Jody would be, I can't remember if Jody was on there, probably not. I know I've been on some documents that I've signed, like the fence program. So there's some documents that I've signed, too. So I think it's, it's wise to have two signers.
I'll, I'll look into that here in the next week or two, because we do have the same set of paperwork coming up later this year for that taxi lane project.
I appreciate you looking into the future, how to deal with this. So I appreciate that.
But I'm, I'm always here to answer questions, you know that. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff here, and I, I try to keep it simple.
Any other questions?
Especially on the federal information that you have to fill out.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
We're at new business. Does anybody have anything recovered on their new business?
Just, do you mind introducing Eric? Just from 911.
Jessica Gilbert, Director at 911. Just want to introduce you to Eric Eddington. He was our new administrative IT person. It's a part-time position that was approved as part of the 2025 budget. He's been with us for about a week and a half. He has twelve years in and out of Central Dispatch. He also is an employee of Dutton EMS in Richfield, so he does have prior first responder experience and also has the education that we need for the IT role. In the week and a half that he's been here, we've had a lot of projects already, and he's been a huge help, so I'm very excited to have him onboard with us.
Anything, Jay?
No, thank you for allowing me to step in here for this, especially that position. We, with a lot of availability in that position in the last couple of years, especially with the passing of the previous person who did it, there's been a pretty big need in fixing a few things and just being able to have the knowledge to get that taken care of, so.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other new business? We're on to motions and resolutions. Before us, we have motion number one, dealing with earned sick time policy. And that's the one that we had made last minute change to for you, is everyone... Is everyone comfortable with moving on the way it reads with that change?
I am.
Entertaining a mo, yeah, go ahead, read the motion.
Number one, move to adopt the earned sick time policy effective March 12, 2025. See attached with inclusion of the following language. Upon death, 100% of accumulated sick leave up to a maximum of 1,000 hours will be paid to the employee or his or her estate based upon the employee's current salary. Policy is compliant with the Earned Sick Time Act as passed by the State of Michigan and intends to comply with all statutory requirements. Adoption of this policy rescinds and replaces all other previous policies and practices unless currently covered under collective bargaining agreement.
And entertain a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I have a question. Am I to assume for an estate to get that money, the person has to be in employment at the time?
That is correct, they would have to be a current employee of Roscommon County when they deceased.
Okay, that's my own question.
And I would like to add, Mr. Chair, I'd like to applaud the insertion of the new comment because I think it's important to put that in.
That was our District Court Administrator, Cott.
That was, that was a good, good ad, thank you. Very important to put that in there.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion two is move to amend the Roscommon purchasing policy. I presented all that information at our last meeting. Has everybody had time to review it? Anybody got anything to say on it at this point? And entertain, would the clerk please read the motion?
Motion number two, move to amend the Roscommon County purchasing policy as adopted in October 2018 to add section F, contracts as follows. F, contracts. Contracts exceeding $10,000 or requiring formal bidding shall require a minimum of $1 million in liability insurance coverage. All other contracts shall require a minimum of $300,000 in liability insurance coverage. Each company or independent contractor slash person performing contracted services for Roscommon County or its fiduciary entities shall furnish a completed W-9. Payment for services shall not be issued until a W-9 is on file with the administration office. Every company with employees shall show proof of workers' compensation insurance. So proprietors or entities not required under statute to carry workers' compensation insurance may furnish a compensation exclusion form. Contracts over $5,000 paid through the Roscommon County General Fund must be presented and reviewed by the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners prior to approval. This policy shall apply to any new or renewed contracts after the adoption of this policy change.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Round to motion number three. And that's the MDOT contract that was just presented to us by Eric verbally. Can the clerk read the motion, please?
Excuse me.
Motion number three, move to approve MDOT contract number 2025-0291, federal project number B-26-0046-2824, authorizing airport manager Eric Gerus to proceed with airport lighting project as outlined in the sponsor contract. $28,080 county share match is included in the 2025 airport budget.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion number four is to adopt a resolution authorizing the chairperson to sign for the, on the behalf of the Roscommon Commissioners for that project. Motion read, please. It's actually a resolution.
I'm aware, I'm just questioning the numbering of it. It should be resolution number 2025-03-1, not 12. That's the first resolution we're adopting in the month of March, so. Just confirming that with Administrator Controller. Okay, number four, move to adopt resolution number 2025-03-1, authorizing chairperson Darlene Censor to sign sponsor contract on behalf of Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Roscommon County Blodgett Memorial Airport enters into contracts, grants, and certifications through federal and state programs. And whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners elected Darlene Censor to serve as chairperson for fiscal years 2025 and 2026, and whereas it is the desire of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners to grant chairperson Censor the authority to execute airport sponsor contracts between Roscommon County Blodgett Memorial Airport and the State of Michigan Department of Transportation Office of Aeronautics as approved by the board. Whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners does agree that if the designated signer changes, Roscommon County and/or Roscommon County Blodgett Memorial Airport will contact the State of Michigan Department of Transportation Office of Aeronautics with the changes. Therefore, be it resolved that Darlene Censor of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners chairperson be authorized and directed to execute airport sponsor contracts with the State of Michigan Department of Transportation Office of Aeronautics on behalf of Roscommon County Blodgett Memorial Airport.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Next item is committee reports. Commissioner Morley, do you have anything to report?
I do have some committee reports. February 28th, I met with trustee Jim Ossling in Garrish Township around the work they're doing on health of Higgins Lake. I found they're creating quite a bit of data to support them in this project. So one of the pieces that I found quite interesting for all of us to know is on Higgins Lake, lakefront people from Garrish, there's 856 lakefront properties, of which only 215 are homestead and vote here. When you look at Lyon Township, which those are the two townships that are part of this, you know, Higgins Lake process, I think, 423 lakefront homes, only 96 are homestead and vote here. So they have a complete database of knowing where these lands are. I mean, it's, it's quite impressive of the information that they're putting together, so I thought I'd share that. March 3rd, Higgins Township meeting, there were about eight residents at that meeting. Most of that meeting was things, they have some money that they can carry over on some road projects. They're renewing some service contracts, just like we do and things. They appointed Steve Doggett, who is their supervisor today, the new one, to the Asable River Board. And there was a big presentation from Sioux Jock on the Metro Park project. It's been going on for three years, I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, $820,000 project, it's huge. It looks like that's gonna come to fruition, probably the end of June. What is unique about this, not only the walking perimeters, the playground, there'll be three pavilions, a bike fixing station, but we will be the first pump track in northern Michigan. The only other places, I don't know where else, maybe downstate. So it's pretty unique to our county, it kinda shows that. March 10th, the village council meeting I attended, Sioux Jock gave that same presentation as well. They're possibly looking at some of their marijuana money that they're just now receiving that might help contribute to that, that wasn't a part of their budget anyway, that they might help with that project. They reviewed some policies and one of their biggest things that came out in that is very similar to what we're doing. Reviewing policy and if they're related in another policy that they are cross-referenced. They had some problems with that too, so they talked about that. They're working on a social district in the downtown village area. They'll probably be, probably in late April, we'll also have the new restaurant open there. They have a person who came through a grant process, Amanda Wachinski, if I say her name correctly. She was a grant hire and really helping with economic development, the things that are going on and things that they wanna do from the village. And another thing that's very unique to our area is they're, they're trying to get a, it's a bird city. We'd be the only, the second one in the whole state that would have this, but because of the Warbler Festival and the connections, they believe that that's an application that they can get, sets us aside. They're also working on a brand video, there'll be somebody coming up to create that that could be a possibility for us to use as a county brand video if we ever so choose, because they'll be up here videoing on a lot of things in the county. Exit 244 is gonna be closed March 24th through April 18th, that, from I-75 for some work. Redstone is a group that is moving quite fast on some property there for housing development of about 60 units. And there's some extra COVID money apparently that's coming to small businesses. I'm not sure why there's COVID money still coming out, but it is for those groups. And there was discussion about the solar farm and we alerted them on the our state representative, Mr. Borton, is trying very desperately to take money away from the DNR if they start to kinda move forward with that commission and putting things on state land without local approval. I don't know where that's gonna go, it's a law today, Public Act 233, but I shared that with them and ways that they can show any dis, any support or dis, dis support, so. That's my report. Oh, no, it's not, you're not done with me. Garrish Township, their meeting last night was their annual meeting. They talked a lot about the Health of Higgins Lake Committee, that they are still looking for people to be on that committee. For anyone in the audience that's interested, they are really trying to pull that committee of people who are not 100% on one side or the other of this fight that's been going on. People that are willing to come to the middle and to try to work on a solution to move forward. So that's what they're looking for. I did speak with one of the residents afterwards, with trustee Ossling, on some suggestion, as we're looking at county projects that we can partner with, maybe it is their Health of Higgins Lake, I don't know, but we should be thinking about what happens when we're not serving in this seat? Where does that longevity stay? All the information that's collected, all the data that's collected, so we don't start the, reinvent the wheel all over again, years down the road. So I thought that was a great suggestion, that's it.
I have a question for you. Was there any talk on the McGanzer swimmer itch issue for this year?
Their meeting that night, no.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended the COA meeting yesterday, Roberta Carey covered that. I went to the Economic Development Board meeting, it was a rather lengthy meeting. The big takeaway for me was that Tammy Frisbee talked about poverty and we're gonna work with her, see if we can do maybe a good, the collaborative board and have a chance to learn more. I think they're gonna be helping us with our strategic plan. The veteran side of the House, myself and some other guys handed out plaques of Basellies. We met at the Elks the other night for their fish fry. It's a big turnout of the veterans there, we presented them a plaque. We went to the Brook last week, met with nine veterans and their ladies and handed out hats, coins, t-shirts, it was a great event. And that's all I got, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. David?
I attended the airport meeting, basically what Eric explained today was discussed in 911 Authority Board. Some of the stuff I can't discuss, but you know with employees and stuff like that, thank you.
I had a meeting with my field representative from Eagle on the materials management planning yesterday and also a representative from our consulting company. We're, had asked for an extension on submitting our work plan. He reviewed what we're planning on submitting, had a couple suggestions. One of the things was, we could put in and charge for my time in county's expenses. I met with Jody afterwards, we decided we're not, it's kinda, it's minimal. We're not gonna do that into that at this point. We probably are gonna have to ask for one more week extension on our work plan with the state, which is supposedly just send an email. I think he said there was only 23 counties out of the 83 that have submitted so far. So, you know, we're not behind the rest of the state by any means. It was a good meeting. He's here to take care of us and try to fix glitches in the process. And also, um, help us get grant monies beyond this. So it was a good meeting and we're moving forward on that. Other than that? Now we're at board comment. Anybody?
I think I've said my
I've heard what everybody's got to say today?
Yeah.
I haven't done either. Now we're at public comment.
Hi, everyone, good morning. Jacob Colini, I am the friend of the court referee, attorney referee, delinquency referee, neglect and abuse referee, and juvenile director here at Roscommon County. And I'm here today, I'm in public comment, both kind of in the professional and personal realm of my life as being a somewhat lifetime resident of Roscommon County. And it's to discuss step four of the strategic plan that the county has. I know that's something that you guys have passed in the work session looking over today, but I just wanted to bring up very briefly, when I looked up, when I looked over the strategic plan, first of all, I wanna congratulate all of you, I think most of the plan is very good and serves the needs of our county very well. However, one thing that was missing in step four, especially because step four, to me, appears to be addressing some social issues and some economic issues in the county. I thought it was very interesting to me when I read that, that there was no specific discussion table there, for lack of a better word, for anything involving youth program or youth services for the county. Why I think that is important is, I think there's several benefits. Number one, looking at it through the professional lens that I have, is any programming that we can advance on the front end of this would serve to produce recidivism in the long-term end. And any programming in the front end that we spend money on in is much more cost-effective than on the, on the other end of it. For the longest time, the county has taken the stance that anything juvenile-related falls on the back end of it and it's either law enforcement or the court's responsibility to address those issues. There's two issues with that, number one, it's not cost-effective at all to do that. And number two, sometimes we get the juveniles too late. So getting them early and getting them in programming that's not necessarily court-funded or associated with the court is very beneficial to the youth. This is not just for at-risk youth though, it's for any, it would be for any youth at the programming. For at-risk youth, research has shown that one stable adult in a youth's life is enough to change that youth's complete perception of things. And to be quite blank, frank, we don't have services for youth here, we don't. There was some hope, excuse me, there was some hope that with the juvenile justice reforms, those services would be more, I guess, flatlined throughout the state. The concern locally, in northern Michigan, pretty much anything north of US 10, was those services would be congested in the metro areas of our state. Unfortunately, we've seen that happen with the closing of the Shawano Center, which was widely allotted to everyone, it's a very good thing to happen to our state and is applauded at the MDHHS level of the state. I wanna make the board well aware that that is the exact fear that anyone in the northern Michigan area in juvenile justice has. They're moving any services that we have for northern Michigan into metropolitan areas and they're praising it as a good thing. It is if you live in one of those areas. If you're one of the 41 counties north of US 10, it is abhorrent. However, not just focusing on the at-risk youth, if we have programming in things for youth to do in the area, that is also gonna increase family retention, be marketable for other families to move here and to stay here. And one of the things that this county has had an issue with is an aging population without a younger population to come to support those, especially in the professional avenues. So I believe that could help there. That's, that's pretty much, pretty much it. I think also, in looking forward, there's other issues that we're gonna be facing. We have screen time issues, we have childhood obesity issues in this county and nationally. We have a great outdoors area here, it's the number one reason anyone wants to live in this, in this community. We need to take advantage of that and we have no programming for these youth to get them outside and get them active and get them learning some skills that might help them in life. So like I said, I'm looking at this through the juvenile justice aspect of it. I'm also looking at it as one of the few people in I'm also looking at it as one of the few people in the building that pretty much my entire career is based on families and helping children. And so this is not just for at-risk children, it would be for other families as well. And I'm not saying that it needs to be priority number one in the strategic plan. All I'm asking is that you give the youth of the community a seat at the table when you're discussing every, every other aspect of it. And I thank you all for your time and for the work that you've done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, Marcy Dankert, County Treasurer. I just wanted to come to the board to let you know that I have started the settlement process from our local township treasures for the 2024 delinquent taxes. To give you an idea, last year, we paid off almost $4 million in delinquent taxes to our local units, including schools, townships, transit authority, and the various millage collecting agencies. This year, I have all but one local unit plugged into my spreadsheet and we are already at $4.6 million in payouts for delinquent taxes. That is a huge increase, I think it's the highest increase I've seen in my 17 years, from one year to the next. I'd like to do a little bit digger, deeper digging and find out what seems to be the motivating underlying issue there of why. But I think across the board, I have one township that actually is less than they were last year. All the other townships are extremely higher than previous. So just, I just want to let the board know that that is going to be a big chunk. I thank you for being diligent with our tax payment fund and that we are still a self-funding county to pay off those agencies. But that will have a big effect on, you know, where that tax payment fund money goes this year. I think the last time I looked, we were about at an $8 million balance in there. $4.6 million takes us down to less than half. We have $2 million set aside for the foreclosure, excess funds payoffs. We are currently receiving the notices back for those that were foreclosed on between years 2013 and 2020. And the deadline for people to file for those excess proceeds is March 31st. I would say we have about 10 that we have received in our office so far. So hopefully at the next meeting, I will have a firm figure on exactly how much we're looking at to potentially pay off for those prior year foreclosures. But we, like I said, we do have $2 million set aside for that purpose, which leaves us, will leave us about a $2 million balance in the tax payment fund after those funds are expended. So I just wanted to make the board aware of those issues.
Thank you.
Marcy, evidently there's been a dollar amount increase in delinquent taxes. Has there been an increase in numbers of properties, delinquent, you know?
Yes, and I'm going to put together a formal report for the board that will outline those increases based on prior year, how many we actually took in delinquent last year versus this year. And I don't account it to new millage monies, I don't think that's the issue. I'll take Asable Township, a very small township in our county. Last year, we paid them off $44,000, this year they're at like $186,000. And that was my first clue that this was going to be, you know, in far excess of what we've seen in the past.
And it takes a while to recoup that money then?
Yes, because we front it and then we have to collect it. Yes.
The deadline for filing for March 30th, 31st?
31st for those excess proceeds.
After that point, we are done with that?
That is my understanding, yes. That is the, once all of the claims are received, then we have to send all the claimants a certified notice that they have to file a motion with Circuit Court to actually get those proceeds expended to them. And then I have 20 days after the Circuit Court hearing to pay out all of the claimants.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Or adjourn?
Yes.
All right.